Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Cedar Falls Board of Education with a reminder that the actions taken at this table will focus on our students and their achievement. With that, just so that everyone knows, on the agenda, Item J will be tabled until a later date.
Correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved. Do I have a second? Second? And seconded by Susie. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Moving on now to Item C, public comment.
We did not. I need your request.
All right. Now, Secretary's Financial Report.
Donnell.
Donnell Gonnerman is coming up this afternoon, this evening.
Good evening. We will be reviewing the October financial reports. So, as of for the general fund for our revenue, we had $11.38 million in our account for the month of October. And as a reminder, a portion of that, or the majority of that, is the first half of our property tax distribution. And then we had expenditures of $4.9 million with a remaining balance of $8.8 million. In our management fund, we had a revenue of $229,000 with expenditures of $12,000 with a remaining balance of $730,000. In our capital projects fund, which is a reminder, this fund is for our Aldrich and North Cedar and Orchard Hill projects. We had revenue of $4,400, which is the majority of interest. And we had expenditures of $2.5 million, which are available balance of $1.2 million, which we are on target to expend by the remainder of the year. And then the majority of those projects will be taken from our sales tax dollars. And we have statewide sales tax. We have revenue of $416,000. We have expenditures of $24,000 with a remaining balance of $9.4 million. As a reminder of that balance, you have $8.492 million available for use. And of our physical plant, you have $1.4 million with expenditures of $341,000 and a total of $3.7 million. For our debt service, we have the revenue of $932,000. We did have a transfer in, which I failed to acknowledge, in Fund 33 of $218,000. And we had expenditures of zero, which we don't expect any expenditures until December in this fund, which we had a balance of $2.25 million remaining. In our student activity, we had $70,000 as revenue, expenditures were $102,000, and a balance of $582,000. In our trust and agency funds, we had a revenue of $31,000. We had expenditures of $16,000 and a total balance of $251,000 for the month of October. In our enterprise fund, we had revenues of $216,000. We had expenditures of $282,000 with an available balance of $706,000, which you'll see is approximately up about $100,000 from last year at this time. And in our coffee shop, just getting started, in our revenue, they have $1,600, expenditures of $1,300, and a balance of $5,600. And finally, we have our River Hills Consortium, which obviously you can see that it's zero balance at this time. Next month, you will see that that fund will change because invoices have been sent out to those districts. So you'll be seeing revenues and expenditures in the November balances. With that, do I have any questions?
Should have introduced Donnell.
Yeah.
Having her come to the audience. As people know, Donnell's been here for the last couple of board meetings. She is going to move into Mr. Neffker's role as the Business Affairs Director here in the next few months. As everybody knows, Mr. Neffker is retiring and moving into the next phase. As we talked several months ago, Donnell is the President-elect of the IASBO, the Iowa Association of School Business Officials in the state of Iowa. Been working in the district for, gosh, seven years?
Eight years.
Eight years now.
Yep.
And certainly just a great person that we're excited to move into this position. As we all know, we're sad to see Doug move into retirement, as we are going to miss his expertise, but excited for Donnell moving into that role.
Sure.
Because of her background and knowledge, and certainly the expertise that she brings to the position.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
Did you have a question?
Yeah.
Good job, Donnell.
Thank you.
Question. So our money market account, Collins I see is paying 1.79% in the majority of our money market categories. Although in the enterprise fund, I don't know if it was just different, but they're paying 1.25. Are we going to be able to get LSB to come a little step up and increase their rate?
You know, we do review those on an occasional basis to determine with the different banks and local agencies around. So there are times that we will contact each of them to see when we have funds available and see what those interest rates are. So hopefully, you know, our community has been fantastic with working with the district and providing fantastic interest rates for us. So we currently do work with all of them. So hopefully, we can keep growing that interest rate a little bit for our dollars, so.
And I can tell you from personal experience, you don't have to worry about Ms. Gonnerman keeping track of interest rates or returns on investment. She's very, very astute at that.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll put the Secretary's Financial Report on file for audit. Moving on now to Communications. Marika.
Hi, everybody. The high school senior leadership group has actually started or just finished selecting the class of 2019's class colors, quote, and flower. So the colors are fire brick red and obsidian black, while the quote for our class is "I am ready to face any challenges that might be foolish enough to face me" by Dwight K. Schrute from The Office. So the class flower is also the sunflower, and these were all voted upon by senior leadership. Student Senate has begun to start planning this year's coming snowball, which will be at Orchard Hill. More details on that to come. And then Rocket Club has also created a GoFundMe account, which is now available to help us reach our $5,000 goal to get us to our launch in Alabama in April. So that'll be exciting. If you want to search for it on GoFundMe, the easiest way would be to search CFHS Rocket Club NASA Project. And it should pop right up for our GoFundMe account this year, but that's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Marika?
So have you started the rocket build yet?
Yes, we just started it over Thanksgiving break, but it's pretty rough. We're just getting started.
Your hand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Donnell.
Hi, good evening. Yeah, I have the communications update for this board meeting. First of all, we just wanted to start out by doing a big congratulations to the CF football team, of course, runners-up in the state tournament. I just texted Athletic Director Troy Becker to ask how often a school district has teams in the finals for the volleyball and the football state tournament. I can't be very often. So that's a pretty big achievement for us, so congratulations to the football team. And actually, we wanted to do a really big thank you actually to the community of Cedar Falls. This was actually taken the night of the football game. That is the east side of the dome, and it is packed. It was an amazing turnout from our community, all through the state tournaments for our volleyball and for our football and all the other athletics as well, but especially for this football game. It was really neat to see all of that community support. So big thanks out to our community. Also wanted to do some quick congratulations. Along with the big successful seasons, we had, of course, some success in regards to our individual athletes and coaches. So Matt Johnson and staff were the MVC Coach of the Year and State Coach of the Year for volleyball. Brad Remmer and staff, District Coach of the Year for football. We had first-team All-State Volleyball with Acacia Brown and Emerson Green, and then had multiple players there that were first-team All-State Football, with Jack Campbell being Defensive Player of the Year. So congratulations to all of those students. Also, just wanted to do a quick mention. I know Marika had mentioned at the last board meeting, but that high school won the food drive contest for the Northeast Area Food Bank. This was the concerted effort across the district with multiple buildings being a part of it. And there were over 31,000 meals donated as efforts from the district and senior leadership at the high school. So congratulations to everyone that was a part of that. That's a great accomplishment. Also just wanted to mention, this is students from Holmes Junior High. This is the Holmes Huddle. This was actually on a Saturday morning. They participated in their annual Thanksgiving outreach to help families in need. So they spent their Saturday morning, and they packed up meals that they then carried out to the community, and it was a great activity for them and something that's now become a tradition there at Holmes Junior High. Also wanted to just do a quick mention. This was actually brought to my attention by the Cedar Falls Women's Tennis Coach. There was tennis players from the men's and women's teams that a longstanding employee at the Blackhawk Tennis Club was diagnosed with breast cancer. She couldn't work anymore, and then these players decided, along with some teammates, they wanted to put on a tennis tournament. So they were able to raise over $8,000 for Jean. Unfortunately, Jean has recently passed away, so it's very sad for those students, Blackhawk Tennis Club, but it's, they're going to actually try to continue the tournament. I believe in her honor and continue the great work that they were able to do with her. So that was just a neat thing to mention that the tennis teams were a part of. Right before Thanksgiving break, this was an assembly that Pete Junior High did. They brought back some high school students that talked with all of Pete Junior High there in attendance to talk about decision-making, things that they do to lead positively, and it was a really great experience for all of those Pete students to see previous Pete students that were in their seats, how they've navigated their high school careers. This was the day before Thanksgiving. Of course, the students weren't in class, but our teachers were learning all day. They, across the district at the elementary level, were going to be doing code.org, an hour of code, all of our students will be doing within the month of December. So then all of our teachers were learning how to navigate the coding, and it was put on by our Biddle Teams, which is our building technology instructional leaders. So they've really taken on learning it themselves, and then were able to teach it to all of the teachers, who will then be working with their students to learn that. So that happened the day before Thanksgiving on a PD day. Again, there's all of our social media channels for the district and buildings. Any questions?
Thank you, Donnell.
Thanks, Donnell.
Okay. Moving on to Item F, information reports. The ACT, Mr. Wedgberry and Senior Plus.
Excited to have our high school principal, Mr. Wedgberry, here this evening to provide the two informational reports, ACT and Senior Year Plus. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. We're going to go ahead and go through the PowerPoint, and then I'm going to just present the information. And then if there's any questions that we have, we can certainly address them. The two parts, the very first part I'll show is the ACT results. That's last year's graduating seniors. And then the second part will be the Senior Year Plus and many of the opportunities. And, you know, as we go through, I don't want to, I guess, a little bit of over-analysis or paralysis through analysis, I guess, as I've looked at the numbers. I've tried to dig into the numbers. I look for rationale. I look for many different things. There's so many variables that are included. But, you know, that's where you can ask questions as we go through the presentation. So the very first slide that we have just shows our ACT composite scores for 2018 graduates. And you can see in the Nationals, the blue. The green is Iowa, and Cedar Falls is in the red. So we had a composite average of 23.4. And the N is we had 259 students who took the assessment. Excuse me, 259 student, no, that's right, 259 students who took the assessment. You can see it there, just in a little bit different form. You can see the English, the math, the reading, the science reasoning, and the composite. And so on the far right in the red is Cedar Falls, and kind of follows the trend across. Here's a look at it over time of our graduating seniors. One of the things that jumped out to me is we see the state of Iowa, we see the National, and we see in Cedar Falls, we've had a little bit of a dip. You know, it's always difficult when we had two of our highest years prior to that, but as you can see, that's our current trend line. Same thing now. It breaks it down for English. And for English, you can see we had 22.7, and that's in relation to the state and national scores. There it is for reading. Reading isn't a specifically taught course. You know, most people attribute that to English. Most people would also say, though, the English department specifically, that reading is a skill that should go across all content areas and not just owned in the English department. Here's our math, ACT scores at 22.7, just in the math area. Science, I believe that's 23.7. And then we get into the college and career readiness. And what they're looking at there is you see the benchmark scores. And so for English, it has a benchmark score on the ACT of a score of 18. If you score 18 or above, there's a 50% likelihood that in a college-level English course, that you will get a B or better. Or a 75% chance that you will get a C or better. And you can see how the benchmark scores outline. English is an 18. Math, reading are both 22. And then science is a benchmark score of a 23. So you can see in our English department, that 82% of the students who take the ACT, they're projected to get 50% chance of a B or better. So quite strong scores across, as you look at English, and you can see then math, reading, science, and then met all four areas. It's one that sticks out to me. I asked a lot of questions on this one. You know, 39 is down a little bit from where we've been, but you have to meet all four categories. 39% of our students had done that. So this shows a five-year trend of meeting in English, and you can see we're at 82% that you just saw on the previous screen. And then you can see where we are for math. Reading. If you want to see any of these, I can certainly spend more time on them, but you see the numbers sometimes multiple times. And there's for meeting all four. It's kind of tough when you see the 53% in 2016, which we had a couple of years ago. We're at 39% this past year. So there's again, you can just see the exact same thing in English, algebra, science, biology. When we say science, a lot of times, they often refer to biology as the course. And so you can just see it in a different format there. One of the things that did stick out to us is the number of students who actually take the ACT is continuing to increase. And so we had our highest numbers, where you see 259 of, challenging my eyesight here, 345. So 75% of our students, which is the highest number that we've had. So 75% of our students are taking the ACT. A little different than when we look at Iowa assessments, when we expect all juniors to take the Iowa assessment. In this particular case, not all students do have to take the ACT, but, you know, we see a range of students who do and who do not.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Might that explain why there was a dip, I guess, from 2016 to 2018 in terms of scores?
You know.
Might it be that more students are taking it?
That's one question that I asked, but I think it would be false to draw a conclusion based on that. Yes, maybe it plays into it. You know, it's kind of odd, because we look at and we celebrate, we've had a real good run of some students earning perfect scores on the ACT. Well, clearly, we have some people that are counteracting that. You know, but I think as the balance, you look across the N across, yes, we do have more students taking it. Is that the reason? I don't know that I would rush to that judgment, but I ask myself that same question, so I think that's very fair.
Are there any barriers for students, for the other 25% who aren't taking it that you know of, that we could do anything about as a board?
That I'm aware of, and we actually met with the Counseling Department this morning, and we were talking a lot about this and who's drawing what conclusions. We're all asking some of those same questions. Right now, I don't think that there are any barriers, and we try not to let financial things or other opportunities become a barrier. And that even comes when we talk about our test prep programs. We have opportunities that scholarships or other opportunities. If somebody wants to be involved in a test prep program, I think we can guide you in that direction. We have some of them that are absolutely free, and some of them where people do pay for them. The bigger deal is that somebody just needs the seat time to actually go through it. There's so many resources there, but one of the most difficult things for our students is to sit down and actually focus on it to complete the practice. And I think that's a pretty big deal. But I don't know of any barriers to students taking the ACT who desire to take the ACT. So that was a really long answer to your question, but I think we've evaluated that piece.
And are all these numbers, students that have taken it for the first time, or if they've taken it second, third?
They may have taken it many, many different times. And so what you see and what a student gets is their highest score.
Okay.
So they can take it 10 times, and the 10th time, if that's their highest score, that's the score that's reported.
Okay.
Brings up another reflection is against our guidance, per se, but not everybody just follows the guidance. We've had a larger number of juniors who start taking the ACT their very first time or what's even reported, early in their junior year, before they've had some of the core coursework of their junior year. That's something that we need to address, and we talked about with the counseling team, is to when you take the assessment really matters. But many of our students are fairly well-prepared, and so they score well enough to get to where they're going, and they don't then take it again. So that's one of the things. So when you take the assessment, absolutely matters. But if you score well enough, we don't have people knocking down the door to go take another crack at it. If their first time was good enough, they're not going to pay for it nor take. It's time and energy intensive. So those are a few of the things that we've discussed.
So what relationship should we expect, if any, between, we've really emphasized learning-based grading as a way to produce more well-rounded students that can be more successful post-secondary? Should we estimate that there's going to be any kind of correlation between that and our ACT scores? Very philosophical.
No, that's a very fair question, because that, again, is one of the other things. You know, when I look at the data, I was like, you know, is there a learning-based grading impact? And I think that's a fair question. I also look at, well, the trend line is across all of our content areas, and not everybody has been fully implemented in learning-based grading. Learning-based grading is, we're in a core rollout right now. You wouldn't see evidence of those particular numbers. Now, I think in learning-based grading, we're talking about best practices. We've had best practices in education going on for a long time, how a grade is reported. So I do not believe that there's any strong correlation within that, because science hasn't even fully implemented there, and you can look at their trend lines, and they follow a similar trend line. So to draw that conclusion, I think, again, would, I don't want to say, no, it's not, but I also don't think that there's enough evidence to say, yeah, there's a close correlation within it. One of the other things that I think we've stressed and discussed is we are continuing to look at schooling opportunities or educational opportunities that aren't ACT-driven. When you look at a CAPS experience, you're getting a ton of soft skills and a ton of learning experiences that are not going to be correlated necessarily in the ACT. You may take a strong pathway and project lead the way, where through your problem-solving, you may be able to demonstrate that on the ACT, but there's not a close correlation between the two. So we continue to emphasize a lot of different programming that may not be ACT-driven. And I know when I asked this conversation, when we talked as administrators, are we willing to risk some of our ACT celebrations for other educational experiences that we consider to be equally or even of greater value in a different capacity? And when I look at some of these things, I don't, you know, nobody likes to see a downward trend, but then we're searching for answers as to what's the why, and how do we make sure we have best practices? How do we make sure we're a comprehensive school? How do we make sure that we have experiences that learn beyond just ACT test prep? So that's another really long answer for, I mean, we're asking these kind of questions about, we don't want to say in one breath, that we celebrate these other educational experiences. Are we willing to risk the fallout of maybe some ACT scores? That's a good question. If I talk to Mr. Ethan Weakman, who's in charge of CAPS, he would absolutely take that risk every day, and he wouldn't think twice about it. But we have some other people who don't have that same perspective and would challenge that. And I think those are both fair arguments. So I don't know if that answered it. I may have talked around it, but there's a lot of things that are going into it.
Yeah. Well, I'm not sure there's a clear answer.
No.
And like you say, we're swimming in data, and you don't know which variables necessarily have the direct correlation on the ACT scores. It's just kind of a general philosophical question, and then going forward, you know, if we should see any, expect that as this is fully implemented, the core is fully implemented, if we should, if we can over, you know, and I would say over a five- or 10-year period, should expect ACT, see scores to improve or not.
Well, I would expect that we continue programming that maintains a focus on producing strong ACT results. We do care about a correlation that our students are competitive and do turn out competitive ACT, because those have the ability to earn dollars in the form of scholarships. But if you want to talk a little bit about a philosophical approach, here's one of the greater challenges we have. Getting parents and students to enroll in the most engaging coursework that yields the highest ACT potential at the risk of lowering their GPA. And we have a lot of people who will produce and protect their GPA to not get the highest level of educational value. And that is a really tough conversation. What carries more weight? What do you value more? The learning experience that may produce the highest achievement result at risking your GPA? For me personally, I would take that risk. I would hope that for my own kids, but not everybody feels that way. And they would say, we're going to take the coursework that gives our son or daughter the best opportunity to protect their GPA, and I don't know that I could convince them differently, nor should I. But those are, that's another significant piece, that we see, we are seeing a drop in a trend of some of our most rigorous coursework, and that's by student choice, not by our assignment. So that's a little bit of a difficulty as we explore. So we'll talk a little bit more about that.
I would say the answer, too, coupled with what Mr. Wedgberry just stated, is we really try to, with learning-based grading, focus on how kids learn those core essential components, what are our power standards. So I think there's going to be reflection over time, and this would be our intent, that ACT scores will trend upwards, especially as they reflect on the questions that they ask, the core learning that's within the Iowa Core, as well as some of the national standards, because those are the things that we're really laser-like focused on more today than maybe we have been in the past. So I think that this is a short-term blip as we look at what are some of the challenges, as we look at how do we refine the educational experiences for students long-term.
Yes, I agree. Okay, there we are. This is about, a little bit about our post-graduates and where they're going. And you see the highest number on the very far left with 76 students is Hawkeye Community College. So we do send a lot of students to Hawkeye Community College, and then you see the big chunk in the middle to our, more of our region schools. This past year, it was Iowa State that had the highest enrollment, followed by U and I, followed by Iowa. I was in there, and then we had a fair amount go to out-of-state colleges.
Does that include concurrent enrollment, the ones?
This includes where they go once they leave our building.
After they've graduated.
Yeah. It's where they're going to be enrolled there. One of the things that's tied into this, and I think it kind of wraps a lot of this together, is a graduation story. And as a part of our school culture goal, we are talking a lot about a graduation story. And one of our main focuses is that when a senior walks across the stage in the spring of this year, that they have thought about what they want to do for a career, job, whatever you want to call it. And then they're intentionally thinking about, then what level of training do I need to get there? And they explore that option a little bit. We've had these things going on with our counseling department, but it's becoming more intentional, because it's really been sad. At some point in time, somebody will say, well, I'm going straight to the workforce, or I'm going straight to this technical school, or I'm going to this community college, and it almost sounded a little bit like an apology, as if I'm letting down because I'm not going to a four-year college. And I think that really hit home with a lot of us, because there's a lot of our students who should feel very proud about the pathway they've chosen, and a four-year college doesn't have to be the answer for everyone. And that's the part we're really trying to convey. Tell us what your passion is, what you want to do. Explore is that's what you really want to do. And then let's make sure that you take the necessary steps, so you're not wasting dollars in college, going two years, dropping out, going into another training. Our goal is to get you in the right pathway. Doesn't mean we're going to be right, because it's written in pencil. It's not written in permanent marker. There's a lot of students who will still go and change their mind. We just want you to have a plan, is our main focus. So keep rolling. That's a little look at ethnicity with regard to the ACT. And Cedar Falls, theirs in the black, the state of Iowa is in the red. Average ACT by gender, that's a comparison of our own males and females. Next one is females against the state. Then you see males versus the state. And that's the end of the ACT presentation. I know we discussed along the way, are there any other follow-up questions that you may have with regard to ACT?
Any questions for Mr. Wedgberry? All right, moving on.
Okay. The next piece is Senior Year Plus, and this ties into advanced placement. So we started talking about rigorous coursework. Advanced placement, post-secondary enrollment options, otherwise known as PSEOA, and concurrent enrollment. And so as we look at the overview, just to make sure that, I'll go through this part fairly quickly, but I just don't want fairly quickly, but I just don't want to skip over it. This has been going on since 2008. And this is really an opportunity to give our students an opportunity to take higher-level coursework, college-level coursework, before they leave the walls of our building. Comes at little or no cost to our students. And so, you know, it says that a lot of students perform better by having those educational opportunities. And so we do provide an awful lot. Iowa's one of 38 states with a policy supporting high school students enrolling in college coursework. So it kind of shows a little bit of our trend. Students who are in AP concurrent or PSEOA courses, and in 2018, we had 81.4%. And so just down slightly from the year before. Anything over 80%, I would celebrate to say we have 80% of our students that are enrolling in some level, college-level coursework. Advanced placement, this doesn't guarantee that you have, you're going to earn college credit. It gives you an opportunity to take an assessment and that assessment score, one through five, may earn you college credit based on where you're going and what the pathway that you may be taking. So like I say, it's an opportunity. It is probably our most rigorous coursework that we offer. Those are some of our AP college offerings, you know, and we cover all the way through. You know, a recent addition is music theory. We don't have a lot of students who take it, but those who do almost always earn fives. Quite incredible to the level of adding the music theory piece in there. Go ahead.
Hey, just a question, Jason. Going back to your dilemma of GPA and rigor of courses, so do any of these courses, they offer a higher grading scale reflecting, you know, that they're tougher courses? So if you, you don't necessarily have to be, you know, 90, whatever, 93% on up to get a four-point, it's actually reflecting that it's a higher level? Do any of these courses offer that?
So AP coursework is on a weighted scale. And so a student, it's on a five-point scale instead of a four-point scale for our AP courses. It is only our AP courses. We consider that the honors courses or the other courses that we offer, concurrent enrollment, you're getting insured transfer credit in some level or shape. That is the reward for doing so. With our AP, you're going against an external assessment. And so based on the level of rigor there, we have agreed that that's on a five-point scale. So students do earn over 4.0 GPA at times when you have the ability to take an AP-level course. Now, what somebody does with that GPA is completely up to the institution. We haven't found a common ground. Many accept it as what you offer it and there's many who will apply their own calculation to the grades that you give them. So kind of a mixed bag there, but we do offer it and recognize it in a weighted GPA form.
Will the AP courses move toward the learning-based grading model?
Yes.
Like the other courses?
Yes. Learning-based grading is not determined on whether it's a fundamentals course, a GenEd course, or an AP-level course. The only ones that we don't necessarily have full control over all grading is our concurrent enrollment that we use through Hawkeye because they may have stipulations that say that we have to follow their grading guidelines. Total enrollment in AP courses, you see, is down slightly from 575 the year before to 518. But you're going to see a little bit of where that goes here shortly. So, and, so 28% of our student population are enrolled in an AP course. There, you can kind of see the trends of who takes actually the AP assessment at the end. So we're hovering around 70% of our students actually complete the course and then take the assessment. Some people just take the course. Some people opt out of the assessment. They opt out of the assessment because they took the course for the academic preparation and they knew that their AP score may not even earn them credit based on where they're going. And so they've just opted out of that experience, knowing that it was just merely preparation.
Does the district cover the cost of the AP exam?
We do not cover the cost of the AP exam.
Students have to.
Yes, students, yep. And that is also not been a barrier. We have worked with students who have, you know, if it has been a challenge, there are scholarships or ways to us, for us to support those students. So I do not believe cost is a barrier, but we do not provide the cost for all of our students.
Jason, one question with the total enrollment, is that 518 different individuals? Or if a person's enrolled in more than one AP class, could they have been counted more than once?
Depends on the one that, are you talking about one that was just there?
That one.
The 518. Okay, so I believe on that one, it's 518.
I think that's total enrollment, so it's the number of, there could be students counted more than once.
We have some students who were taking five classes and they would count five times for the same student multiple times, is my understanding there. Should be rock solid in that response and for some reason, that didn't hit me there. Little bit about the success of our students. Students who do take the AP courses, they consider to pass if you're three, four, or five. And you see a large percentage, 84.3% of our students are scoring with a three or higher. And so I would, I would say the level of preparation that our students receive through our AP, it's demonstrated when they take the AP assessment. Our AP scores are strong. Post-secondary enrollment options. This is where they're taking it as a regular university. Right now, this is speaking to our courses that are taken at UNI. And so students may go there. The school district pays up to $250 per course to post-secondary, to the post-secondary institution. But we do have a number of students who are enrolled and go take classes at UNI. This used to include Hawkeye, but that no longer includes Hawkeye. All of Hawkeye courses are now considered concurrent. So the only ones that fall under the post-secondary enrollment options are our UNI courses. And that was just a recent change. So there's plenty of options if you want to read through all of them, but there are a lot of options that our students have taken courses at UNI. So you can see just a little bit of the trend. You see UNI and Hawkeye Community College included in there. And then you'll see in the most recent year, it has just 39. It's only attached to UNI and Hawkeye is no longer included there because that last part, change in the state law. Concurrent enrollment, this is something that continues to grow. It is a challenge for our high school teachers to make sure that they have the credentials to teach a Hawkeye course. They keep increasing the coursework that they need, but our teachers have done a fantastic job of continuing and willing to take those, that coursework, to offer these to our students. Almost every concurrent enrollment course that we have is taught in our building, which is another fantastic piece. And it's taught by our teachers, which is very, very helpful. So began classes originally called dual credit, now referred to as concurrent enrollment. I don't need to read it to you, but you can also see that students can earn college credit through two career academies as well, the manufacturing and the health careers. So a few other options. There's a few of our concurrent courses offered. Our numbers of, well, you'll see them here in just a moment. Those are our core offerings. And then you see our career technical. You can see many of the CAPS. You can see our project lead the way. You can see our intermediate Spanish, which was recently added. A lot of our industrial technology courses, a little bit of business law. There's a wide variety of career and technical offerings through concurrent enrollment. And we did see a slight dip in our AP enrollment, but you see considerable gain in our concurrent enrollment. Jumped from 975 to 1,114 students who are enrolled in concurrent coursework. So we have a lot, but virtually all of our areas, including art now, we have a lot of concurrent enrollment opportunities. And we have a lot of students who are choosing to go this pathway. And I think there's some great advantages. I think sometimes there's some potential pitfalls, specifically when you opt out and you get those great educational experiences in high school. And then you go to college and you opt out of coursework, which saves you dollars, but typically, it also puts you at a higher level of coursework in your freshman year. And when that happens, people sometimes need that softer transition into college life. We're trying to make sure that we find that happy medium, that our educational counseling is done appropriately. But we do have a high, as you can see, that trend line is just growing and growing. Any questions about any of the Senior Year Plus options?
Questions for Mr. Wedgberry.
I did have one. We had AP and BC, was it calculus?
Calculus, yes.
Did I see that that's also offered as a post-secondary option or is that, would that not be the case anymore?
It is not, no. To dive into that, we had AP calculus AB and we had that for a number of years. Recently, we've added BC because BC covers more content and some of our students who are going to Iowa State, going into engineering, other things, they weren't recognizing the AB. And so now we have offered the BC. That particular piece is there. One of the things that we are now exploring though, is we have not offered calculus as a concurrent enrollment class, but we think that there's a value in doing so. One of the things we can do is we, you know, if we have a teacher who is certified through Hawkeye to teach calculus, but also has taken the AP training, they can offer the AP course so that you get the AP experience. You can take the AP assessment, but you can also earn the concurrent enrollment transfer credit. And so, I mean, those are things that we're currently exploring. How do you get the biggest bang for your buck? The level of preparation we're seeking, but you can also get at least some credit that's recognized. So that is not currently in existence. We intend for that to be the case next year. So I don't know if you asked me that knowing that.
Well, no, I think I was, I was kind of getting at, post-secondary, one of the, one of the conditions was that it's not a course that is currently offered, a comparable course offered by the high school.
Right.
So if, would that AP class be considered comparable to what's offered at, say, UNI?
So if a student is very much accelerated in math, they can take our AP calculus BC. And then if they are a sophomore in high school or junior high school, we do have some sophomores that are at that level, then their next step is to go to UNI through the PSEOA and they would take linear algebra and then they would take calculus III.
Okay.
And so we do have some students that are going beyond our AP calculus and going into linear algebra and calculus III.
So I was going to ask if this is limited to seniors, but you just talked about sophomores. Being able to take, so advanced placement is available for students as early as sophomore year?
Yes, and you can actually have some students that are ninth graders be involved in advanced placement as well. Not the concurrent enrollment at that point in time, but the advanced placement, we do. You know, that was why we offered AP Human Geography, a recent addition. We never had offered the course. This is the first year offering it. And then we had, or excuse me, last year was the first year offering it and we offered it, we had five sections of it right out of the chute. So we clearly had a need and students did very, very well with AP Human Geography, but that was a course that was more accessible to freshmen and sophomores. So I think AP Biology is not one of the courses that is accessible to many students. They find out there's a great variance in an AP course.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if you ever come up with those solutions, I'm all ears. Thank you very much.
All right. Moving on now to the second and final reading of Board Policy, 1007.1, Service Assistive Animals. Dr. Petti.
Yes, this is just the second reading of the policy that we discussed at the previous board meeting. And we certainly, as we talked about last time, recommend the approval of this policy as we know that this continues to be an area of interest and sometimes challenge and provides clarity with language and direction for us as a district.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve this policy? Do I have a motion to approve this policy?
So moved.
It's been moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Suzie. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item H on the agenda, the approval of the 2019-20 SBRC administrative cost for the River Hills Consortium.
Now, the mundane portion of the board meeting this evening, if you want to pull up the PowerPoint. This is the first of two agenda items to talk about administrative cost requests. A little bit about the River Hills Consortium, just as a reminder that there are a total of 38 public school districts in Iowa that are members of the consortium. 28 of those 38 have students enrolled for this current school year. And we know what the consortium is for, it's for providing students with educational opportunities that have disabilities. 107 students are enrolled this year. We do have one third, three-year-old in there this year, I do believe. And also, the consortium member districts contract with Central Rivers AEA for staffing, teachers better educators, administrator, and to lease the facility as well. And as part of the special administrative cost request, according to the Iowa Department of Education, a school district can request special education administrative cost requests if they meet certain criteria. The River Hills Consortium does meet that criteria and you need to make that request one year in advance. And so here's the calculation for that. The total administrative salary is, will be 139,424. You divide that by 107 students, you get that, and you take that times 13, which is the number of students Cedar Falls had at River Hills as of count day, which was the last Friday in October. And then you add the cost of FICA and IFRS. So you can see the total amount of our request is $19,876.95. This would be included in our total as special education costs for the 2020, excuse me, 2019-2020 school year. And this, what this does is it allows us to add this expense to our total cost for special education for that school year. And we'll find out later whether we run it at that point, whether it's a deficit or a positive balance.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the 2019-2020 SBRC administrative cost?
I move that the Board of Directors of the Cedar Falls Community School District approve the application to the School Budget Review Committee in the amount of $19,876.95 for special education administrative costs associated with River Hills Consortium program for the 2019-20 school year.
Thank you, Suzie. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Sasha. Any questions or comments for Doug or anyone? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Moving on now to the approval of the 2019-2020 SBRC administrative cost for the Lead Center Consortium.
If you want to pull that back up. Now, this is the second one this evening and the Lead, or formerly known as the Brimwood Center up in Waverly, currently has 19 schools involved in that consortium. They, in essence, provides very similar programming to River Hills, except it's a little bit more on the behavioral side instead of the other issues that River Hills deals with. There are 40.43 students enrolled this year and of course, that's based on the fact that not all students are enrolled full-time. And again, it's the same rules apply for that consortium as far as allowing for special education expense that they do for River Hills. The calculation for that, and there's the salary cost for the administrator divided by the number of students, times the six students Cedar Falls has enrolled, plus FICA and IFRS means $12,079.99. Same rules apply. This would be for the 2019-20 school year special education cost that would be added to that total cost for that school year.
Thank you, Doug. Do I have a motion to approve the 2019-2020 SBRC administrative cost?
I move that the Board of Directors of the Cedar Falls Community School District approve the application to the School Budget Review Committee in the amount of $12,027.99 for special education administrative costs associated with Lead Center Consortium program for the 2019-2020 school year.
Thank you, Eric. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We've tabled item J, so we're moving on to K, the approval of sales of structures at 2000, excuse me, 2426 Hawthorne Drive, Cedar Falls, Iowa. Mr. Nisker.
And I am very pleased to be able to inform the board that we did send out requests for bids on the sale of the house and the home, or the garage, excuse me, located at 2426 Hawthorne. And as a reminder, that's the property that was generously donated to the school district next to Cedar Heights Elementary School. We did receive one quote requesting to purchase that property and our bid was. We did receive one quote requesting to purchase that property, and our bid would be our recommendation to accept that quotation. And I think there's a motion that has the dollar amount, and the gentleman who is going to be purchasing the home.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education accept the $3,150 bid from Craig A. Johnson, 3230 West Bennington Road, Cedar Falls, Iowa, for the purchase and removal of structures located at 2426 Hawthorne Drive in Cedar Falls, Iowa.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments?
I think we'd be remiss without saying again, thank you to the anonymous donor that donated that property. This is for the removal of the structures, and certainly that land then is going to be turned into green space around Cedar Heights. So we just can't thank that donor enough for their generosity, and certainly what they are going to provide for those students in that neighborhood around that school for years, generations to come.
And I can also tell you that the gentleman that's going to be purchasing that home will be starting to prepare that, those structures for moving over the winter months. And as soon as school is out in early June, he plans on physically moving those structures off the site. At that point, then, in the spring, the board will, or the administration will be soliciting quotations to take out the basement and fill the hole in, and have the fences moved around, and that sort of thing, with the goal, hopefully, of having everything ready by the time school starts, or very shortly thereafter, next year.
Should be a very interesting thing to watch if you had an opportunity to watch them move it out to the property. Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Moving on now to the approval of the change order for Aldridge Elementary. Item L.
And that would be me again, and we have one more PowerPoint to talk about that. As Aldridge has opened up and in for use, we're getting ready to close out the project. And one of the things that Larson Construction came to the district and generously informed us that they had made a mathematical air in alternate number one that the board approved for those six additional classrooms, and that air would be in the district's favor to the $214,000. Then also, the second portion of the credit is for the unused portion of overexcavation. Within the contract, there was a number of cubic yards at $35 per cubic foot for excavating the site to make sure we had proper support for the facility. They didn't need to do as much as we thought. So you can see there's a credit at the 27,540. So we have a total change order request of $241,540 to the district's favor. I would have normally signed that on the spot, except there's a board policy that says that you need to approve it. So we're going, that's why I'm bringing it to the board for your approval.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the change order for Aldridge?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District approve the construction change order credit, $241,540 for work associated with the Aldridge Elementary School project.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Eric. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on now to superintendent's report. Thank you.
Just a couple of different items. Our next board meeting is December 10th, and we are looking at maybe the information report moving. That will be computer science. We heard, as Janelle gave the presentation earlier, communications update, that we are having hour of code at the, in December for all of our teachers and at the elementary level. Our hope is potentially come back in January with that board report, that information report as an update. That way, we can kind of capture all the different components of learning that occurred throughout the month of December. January 9th, we have the Board Admin Council Retreat. That starts at 9:30 in the morning. Then January 14th is the first board meeting in January. Just a reminder, we only have one board meeting scheduled in December, and that would be on the 10th.
Questions or comments regarding the superintendent's report? Questions and comments from board members?
Just as a reminder, as we get through this, I know we have our thoughts on the PTA meetings, PTO meetings, and we know that the combined one is in January.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
There is a Google Doc that's out there. I need to get that probably shared with everybody. I believe some board members have signed up for some of those, but I will, that is out there. So, and dates have been confirmed with our administrators at the last admin council as well as building visits. So I will make sure that everybody has access to that.
Perfect. Just a reminder that there will be a legislative reception on that, is it Wednesday, December 12, December 12, at the Isle from 4:30 to 6:30. It's through the Chamber and Alliance. All you need to do is get on their website, and you can RSVP there if you'd like to go. It's a very light, relaxed, casual event, but it's a great opportunity to listen to the legislators speak before they go down to Des Moines. Any other questions or comments? Yes?
Just the admin retreat on the night, on January 9th, is 9:30 to noon?
Noon, correct.
Okay.
Good question.
Thank you.
Any, yes?
There was a question in the Courier the other day. It was concerning Waterloo Schools and their planning of parent-teacher conferences. Could we talk about the policy that we have here as far as how we decide where we're going to place those conferences?
Sure. And again, looking at Dan and Pam, if they want to speak or if they want me to speak on it. Dan is grabbing his mic, so I think that'd be tremendous for them to be on camera.
Normally, our conferences at the secondary level are in conjunction with the end of a quarter. So they're within a week or so of the first quarter, and then again, at the middle of the third quarter. That's about halfway through a semester opportunity for teachers to get with parents at that particular time, and then there's plenty of time for students to improve if need be between then and the end of a semester.
And at the elementary level, we used to have them after the trimester, and it pushed it back into December, and we thought that was a little bit later than we wanted it. So we moved those dates back into November.
Thank you.
We do it, you know, on a thoughtful approach to align it when some of the grade reporting is due, but more importantly, to help focus and improve the student learning that maybe either lacks at a time, so we can work with those parents to better inform what the students are doing within those grading periods.
Great question. Thank you for asking it. Yes.
One other quick thing. I noticed the IASB Day on the Hill is February 5th. It's already been announced, so just if folks are trying to look ahead to that, that date has been announced.
Perfect. And that's one of the dates that we always encourage board members. A lot of times, we reach out to our associations to see if they'd like to be involved with that as well. But then we'll invite our student board rep, Marika, to see if she'd be interested in attending. Typically, we've gone down with, you know, six, seven, eight of us, and certainly, I think it's a tremendous opportunity with a team of, team of us going down.
Speaking of that, and I know I'm not going to say that, yeah, I can, I can say it because I can look it up right here. Parents for Great Iowa Schools. This Day on the Hill is an opportunity that we could invite community members if they would like to go. I don't know if that would limit us, or if we could take a bus down there, maybe? I don't know. I'm just, I'm just, I don't know, depending on how many people would like to go, or if they'd meet us down there. But that would be an opportunity, and they strongly recommend it. It's easy for Des Moines to go down, or any of the surrounding areas that touch downtown Des Moines, but it's more difficult for communities that are, school districts that are farther away from the capital. So this would be one time that they recommend bringing community, community members along also.
We've had community members attend in the past, which is greatly appreciated. I would have to check on busing schedules and activities and number of buses out that day to see if that's something we can accommodate. But certainly, we know we typically can have multiple vans and other vehicles that would be able to go down to advocate on the hill on behalf of education.
Okay, that's great.
What date was that again?
February 5th. Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of adjourning? Do I have a motion? Sorry, I better have a motion.
I move.
I got it heard. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded by Susie. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.